I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, May 6, 2024. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room in the Town Hall, Wmetcalf Square. It is being televised. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard, Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Present. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Petrie, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public comment tonight, and we do not have any visitors or delegates. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 22, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
I think I actually have to abstain as I realize I was not here.
One abstention, motion passes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, I'm sorry, just for warrant, SPW 24-18 in the amount of $272,710.87.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion, and this time it is for payroll warrant, SPW 24-21 in the amount of $919,983.60.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Lutteiri?
Aye.
Mr. Matucci?
Aye.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant, SPW 24-22 in the amount of $894,180.25.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lutteiri?
Aye.
Mr. Matucci?
Aye.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Purinton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve a Buildings and Grounds request by the Winthrop Viking Hockey Boosters for their car wash?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purinton. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, motion passes. May I have a motion for Winarc use of the facilities for the Driscoll Megan Invitational along with a vote to waive the fees for that event?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes. We have a subcommittee report on the curriculum tonight, I believe.
Yes, we do. So after months of meetings and going through all the potential new curriculums, the committee has finalized Bookworms as the new curriculum. There was a rep from each grade, including the reading specialists and administration in the decision. Development, or professional development on this starts on June 5, and we're gonna use it to influence the summer reading program.
Fantastic. It's exciting to see that moving forward. I know there's been a lot of deliberation behind that.
In front of everyone that wasn't at the curriculum meeting is the handouts of what we got there. So you see the different modules that K through 5 will be going through, and that's how we're gonna use, we're gonna use that to influence what the summer reading project, the summer reading books are to get the kids up to speed.
Okay, fantastic. Any questions?
Yes. Did you evaluate different platforms, or was this the recommendation of Ms. Gallivan?
There were five different, five different curriculums at the beginning, and between the reading specialists and the teacher representatives, they met monthly at least to whittle it down, and then based on the presentation of the final two, this was the selected choice.
And then when they narrowed it down to two, then they had the representatives from both those places join them via Zoom, go through the whole programs with them, and then, as Mrs. Purinton said, they chose Bookworms.
Maybe just mention a little bit about sort of the platform behind the curriculums that we were looking at and why we were looking at certain curriculums, and then it got narrowed down to two. Laurie can explain a little better that it was based on data review of our students, K to 5, to see where their weaknesses are.
Yeah, and, you know, the whole focus around, you know, the buzzwords that you hear now is the science of teaching reading, and it's all about building core knowledge and foundational knowledge in kids, and bringing other things. So then you see these modules, you'll see that each one is, like, has science or a social studies element. So they're learning, and everything they do, it's like three different, three different pieces to the program, like three 45-minute sections to the program. So there's a choral reading, there's a shared reading, they read at grade level, above grade level, and below grade level in every classroom setting. So, and there's a lot of partner reading and all. And it really is that foundational building, the core knowledge, that I think the teachers sounded like they're most excited about.
Great.
It's really routine, it's really structured, and we're hoping that, you know, it will be something that even if there's a substitute, we won't have to give out different lessons. Like, they'll be able to step in because the kids will know what the routine is.
Great.
So, yeah, they're very excited about it. That was the big piece that I think that came through.
I was just gonna say that in addition to including different subjects matter while the students are learning how to read, and they're learning different subjects through their literacy instruction. Since 2005, there's also been a shift in the science of reading and looking at how students learn best. That's where a lot of these rules-based reading companies come from that we pay for, for students that need individualized reading instruction, and this program incorporates a lot of that into their tier-one interventions, which is, like, just really helpful. There's also a block of time each day that I was excited about for differentiated reading instruction for all reading levels, students that need more support, students that are at their reading level and are working on comprehension, and then students that also are above their grade level.
And the consistency as well, you know, I think is huge. The consistency of K to 5 is a big game changer for us, that, you know, for our staff as well as our students, you know, as they transition, you know, from one school to the next. The next, it's not a whole new, you know, methodology of reading. It's consistent practice, K to 5, which we, you know, through the research, have found that that consistency of practice promotes stronger reading scores and, you know, students, you know, higher literacy. So we're excited about it.
Yeah, and we talked about it at the meeting today, too, like, the idea about the integrity of the program and everyone using the same thing. So this is considered an open-up resources program, which means all of the actual lessons themselves are all online. It's all free. What you're buying are the trade books that are addressing all these modules and these topics. So every child in third grade will use all the same books. It won't be this teacher liked this short story, and this teacher liked this book. They'll have a guaranteed viable curriculum in every classroom.
Nice.
So that will be a nice, I think, and that's when Ms. Petrie mentioned during the meeting, like, to front-load. So for example, her daughter is going into third grade. If we put out some selections from the reading lists from first and second grade, you know, it might give kids a leg up on that background knowledge because they're coming in at a part in the program where they might not have done something on life cycles yet, and yet they're gonna read about it. So that was a great suggestion.
It would also save the teachers at the beginning of the year having to go back and cover what was, because of prior year stuff.
Yep.
Were these, were the materials evaluated for diversity inclusion?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, that was a big piece of it as well.
Yeah, it's a very wide range of titles covering all sorts of, everything that we would want it to include for DEI.
I think we're also incredibly fortunate to have reading specialists like Mary McGonigal and Megan Ball, who are spearheading this effort, and the kids are incredibly fortunate to have teachers that are so passionate and knowledgeable with this. So I thank them too for all their efforts.
Yes, the whole committee with the representatives from the fort and the administrators, every meeting had at least one administrator from each building at it. Sometimes all four of them were there, the principals and the assistant principals. We had representatives from special education and from ML and every grade law. So it was a great group.
Nice. Excellent.
One thing that I was also really interested in is because of the access to the curriculum itself is open to anybody. You don't have to pay for it. Parents can look on, at the, look online at the curriculum and see what books their students are reading, if they wanna get copies from the library and practice reading at home, or read it themselves so they know what to talk to their students about and help, you know, like reinforce what's being taught in school. I love that, and I love that it's like actual books that you can find, not, you know, one of those anthologies or stories that you're unfamiliar with.
Exactly.
All right. Any other questions? That leads us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So this week, if you don't know, I'm gonna tell you, is Teacher Appreciation Week. And it's also, also school nurse appreciation, no, it's Nurse Appreciation Week, and we have nurses who happen to be school nurses in our, in our district, and as you know. And then on May 8, which is Wednesday, it's actually School Nurses Day. So we had some students, thanks to the PTOs and PTAs, that did chalk the walkway. Unfortunately, the rain decided to show up, which is, sort of seems to become a theme around here. However, we were able to get quite a few pictures of the artwork that the students did at the school, so that was great. So we were able to share that with the teachers this morning. So lots of nice activities going on in the schools for Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurse Appreciation Week, sponsored either by the PTO or by the buildings themselves. So that's, you know, super cool to see all of that being done. CASR is gonna be hosting an Around the World on Wednesday from 12 to 4. That's our early release day. It'll be an afternoon of sports, creative crafts, and global cuisines, and that's been being advertised in each school so that families can take advantage of that. And talking about May 8, when CASR is hosting Around the World, that is a district-wide half-day for our students, so we've been advertising that quite a bit. May 8 is a busy day because it's also Walk and Bike to School Day. I'm sure you've seen that advertised either through the schools or on social media. So we encourage parents to walk or bike to school. There is literature out there where they formulated groups where you can meet up and walk from certain points, and that's gone home to all the parents as well. Just to follow up on the Italy trip, so although it's not a school-sponsored event, many of our students go, and one of our teachers, Mr. Nickerson, does a trip out of the country each year. Students that went to high school and staff, some of our parents are allowed to take part in that. They went to Italy, and what a huge success. The kids have been raving about it, the parents have been raving about it. I happen to have two of the people that work in my office, both of their children were on the Italy trip. So they had the WhatsApp app, which is something that I didn't know about because clearly I don't leave the country, and just the thread of messaging between the parents and the students and how up-to-date the parents who were here were kept on their students and the ability to reach out to Mr. Nickerson or any of the other chaperones to check in on their kids. Everything was, like, in real time. So the kids were raving about it. I don't think they were back two minutes and they were already planning their next trip, which I think may be Greece, but I'm not 100% sure yet. Yeah, is it Greece? I think it was gonna be Costa Rica, and then it was about what time of the school year and who plays sports during that time. So I believe they've settled on Greece coming up. So another successful trip. In terms of the budget, March 16 at 6 o'clock, I will be presenting to the FinCom. I plan to provide the FinCom with copies of the needs-based budget. I will be sending a new version. So at our meeting where you voted the needs-based budget, you had a Level Service physical budget in front of you with the needs listed and attached to that with a summary of that. Since then, I've had the opportunity to take those needs that were listed in front of you and put them into an actual document that looks just like the Level Service document. So I will get that out to individual school committee members as well, so you can have that. So that meeting is on the 16th at 6 o'clock here. I hope to get information out to them by Friday with the hopes that they'll take an inordinate amount of time to look at the inordinate amount of work and the importance of how we've spelled that out for them. It's here. So the other thing I think that's important, I checked with Ms. Chavez today. There is no public comment during that timeframe. That's not a meeting that has public comment. It will be on Zoom, so folks can watch it from Zoom if they want. They certainly can come here and watch it as well, you know, listen as well. But I am looking forward to that meeting. And also around the budget, just as an FYI, I invited all, I've met with all the PTOs, obviously, multiple times throughout the year, but I had the PTO presidents and vice presidents and anyone else they wanted to bring as part of their group to a meeting here last Thursday, and I walked them through the Level Service budget and the Needs-Based Budget and had lots of conversation with them so that they're aware, because they're such a voice to our parents, so that they are very much aware of what our budget forecast is, but also just giving them the assurance that we're listening. And so I wanted to go through what the needs were and sort of how we're advocating for those things, and to feel free to contact me or school committee members if they have questions or concerns. The meeting was about an hour and a half. They had great questions. And I'm gonna have a follow-up meeting with them, hopefully, you know, probably by the end of this month, just to see if there are more questions, what other feedback are they looking for. So I did not give them a copy of the full budget, but I did give them the summary sheets and was able to walk them through those. So, and they were super appreciative, which was nice. Let's see, Gorman Fort Banks, as of April 22, kindergarten registration was up and running. We're using an online system for registration this year. We certainly will have parents come in if need be. We're using Power School, which is the student information system platform we're moving to next year. So this is our first, our first steps with Power School. It's been going very well. Parents are, go on and they click a link, then we send them back a username and password. Then they use that username and password to do the registration for their student. There's lots of uploading and some technical stuff that goes along with getting us their documentation. The folks in the Parent Information Center, as well as Laurie and Orelli and the principals, have been helpful if people are stuck on something. We're, you know, certainly welcoming people to come in to be able to have support if there's things that they can't upload. Hopefully by the, you know, kindergarten registration is rolling technically, but we ask that folks get everything in, I believe, by the 15th, I think. So that doesn't mean, it'll give us a snapshot of what the numbers are, but, you know, if you've been here for a while, you know traditionally it's like August 28 where parents freak out and say they forgot to register their kid, and they come up and register. So I'll bring back at the next meeting an estimate of where we're at in terms of enrollment numbers for kindergarten. Staying with the Gorman Fort Banks, let me see. Gorman Fort Banks Kindergarten Family Orientation is being held on Thursday, May 23, from 6:00 to 6:30 for incoming students. And then they'll also have a visitation for those students on June 6. That'll be widely publicized to our incoming parents. And the music teacher, Ms. Wardrick, at the Gorman Fort Banks will be hosting a choral concert for families on June 4. So I'll bring more when we get closer to that. ATC, last week was the book fair, and it went well, as well as the 5th grade Wax Museum Presentation. And that was cool. Parents were able to come in and see their students do some presentations. And it was, you know, the kids did a wonderful job. They were excited to have their parents and lots of staff walking around and complimenting them on what a great job they did. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of last week, Viking Longship class was visited, had their visits over to the Arthur T. Cummings School, and just getting kids interested and kind of bringing them up to speed on Viking Longship. I talked about the Chalk the Walkway, which was a huge success. 4th graders at the ATC will take MCAS, and 5th graders will take, 4th graders are taking math, and 5th graders will be taking science on the 7th and the 9th of this month. So parents are certainly, yep, tomorrow and Thursday. Parents are certainly up to speed on that with all the information that they receive from Mrs. O'Leary. And then sort of a big deal this, this summer, we're running a no-cost Summer Learning Academy from July 8 to August 1. It's a four-week summer program at the Arthur T. Cummings, and it will be taught by ATC teachers. The students are gonna have opportunities to strengthen their reading, writing, math, and science skills. Legos are involved, just in case anyone wants to know, as well as, you know, some key things like developing social skills and friendships through fun games and activities. 3rd and 4th grade students will participate in small group discussions, lively debates, and engaging math activities. And the 5th grade will focus on completing the work that's required for the middle school, which is, I'm sure, something that parents will be very thankful for. Having done it four times myself, it is a lot of work. So they're getting information from the school. There'll be sign-ups and information related to that. This summer, we're also gonna have a science teacher trained by Lego, who's gonna work with all students at the ATC using Lego kits and looking at creative reasoning and thinking systematically through real-world problems and solving those problems, as well as engagement in critical thinking. During that same four-week summer program, kids will also be visiting the Winthrop Public Library, be able to check out books, get library cards if they don't have them. The program is gonna be held on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8:30 to 12. And again, parents are being notified with a link to register for that. At the middle school, May 8 is the Wellness Fair at the middle school. That's also a half-day. We're excited to bring that Wellness Fair back. The theme this year is Fitness Fiesta with a focus on physical health. And it'll have a wide variety of organizations and groups promoting health and wellness for our students, especially physical wellness. On May 14, we're gonna hold a parent meeting for the DC trip. That's coming up again. So 8th graders at the middle school are gonna be headed off to DC. And so the parents come in, and we kind of talk about the whole program and the process and the rules and regulations and sort of the schedule. So that's exciting. Sticking with the middle school progress reports, a tentatively scheduled to come out on Friday, May 10. Parents are certainly being notified of that. And the remaining MCAS schedule for the middle school, the 15th and the 16th, is gonna be math at all grades. The 21st and 22nd will be science. That's grade 8 only. And on May 29, grade 8 will do civics as well. So at the high school, I attended the 10% Breakfast on Thursday with Mr. Lutteiri and a host of other folks. It was lots of amazing accomplishments of our kids. So it was a top 10%, and it was for grades 10, 11, and 12. Students get recognized for being in the top 10% of their class. And then we move on to the seniors, and we do the, as they are recognized for being in the top 10% of the class, if they've chosen their college destination or next step in life after college, they get recognized for where they're going or what path they're taking, which was really nice to hear. The number of colleges and career paths that our students are taking. There's also the book presentation. So we do book awards, Columbia Book Award, Harvard Book Award. You get a little overwhelmed when you're, when you're sitting there looking at 17-year-old kids and you're saying, oh my, you've accomplished more in the last four years, I think, than I have in my entire life. And it's amazing to see how many of these kids, which is sort of the data sort of blurb I was doing while I was there, are not just academic kids, you know, in the top 10%. They're kids that are involved in sports, community service, they're working, you know, they're volunteering their time. And it's just pretty neat to see, I don't know how they balance it. It's actually a little mind-boggling. But it was very, very well attended, and the kids had a great time. PTO put on a great breakfast for the kids. The food was amazing, and the atmosphere. They decorated all the tables at the Cottage Park Yacht Club, so we were super thankful for that. High school gets very, very busy at this time of the year. So May 21 and May 22 is MCAS Math Days for Grade 10. May 20, believe it or not, is the last full day of school for seniors. So I can't even believe we're talking about that. The 21st through the 24th, seniors will be and required to be in attendance on the final schedule, taking their finals. And then graduation is May 31 at 6 o'clock at Miller Field. Lots of other things happening prior to that, such as senior night. That's a student-only activity. That's May 24. The prom is the 28th, so before the prom, which is at the Hyatt again this year, they'll do the promenade where the students all come out of the high school, and they get announced, and they get on their bus. That will start at 5:15, and then the buses will get them off and get them over to the Hyatt Regency for their prom to start at 6. And on May 29, which is the day after the prom, the kids have their class night. And so the students come in at 6, and they have something to eat, and everybody kind of mingles around, signs yearbooks, and chats for a while, and then at 7 o'clock, the parents and the families come in and are able to sit for that award ceremony, which is scholarships and awards under $1,000 that students receive, and then obviously at graduation, there will be more awards. Curriculum, we already talked about, we already talked about that from the Curriculum Subcommittee. You know, I'm super excited about this big step in curriculum for us, just based on the fact that it's gonna bring continuity and it's gonna, you know, for our staff as well as our students, I think that's super important. So we can do a lot of professional development and, you know, vertical and horizontal discussion around the reading for our kids. So we're really looking forward to that. And then I can do public relations now, or I can wait?
Go for it.
All right, public relations. Congrats to the boys tennis team. They clinched their share of a conference title with their win over Salem, and they're now back as the NEC champs, which is pretty amazing. Congratulations to PD Silverman, who was named Boston Globe All-Scholastic. He received the Herald All-Scholastic last month, if you remember. He also received the MSCHA Player of the Year. PD's vision is he is gonna do a postgraduate year at Tilton Academy, so that's exciting for him. Winthrop High School Drama Society is performing How to Get Away with a Murder Mystery on May 10 and 11 at 7 o'clock. You can jump right on the high school website and secure your tickets for those shows. Congratulations to Vasili Seotis, who was named MIAA Student of the Month for January. Congrats to Coach Anthony Hatzavasis, who earned his first career win as the girls lacrosse coach with a score of 14 to 10 win over Stonem. And Winthrop Middle School Students of the Month for March, Liliana Roberts and Vladzalva Palmanareco, and that's in grade 6. Grade 7, Bahija Kaheri and Isabella Oliver. Grade 8, BD Hassan and Asquina Salemi. So congratulations to those middle school students. The MWRA School Education Program awards the following ATC students for making it to the final judging session in the 2024 poster contest. Our kids love this contest. So Clara Omaragomez in grade 3, Kai Monahan in grade 3, Lane Thompson in grade 4, Anna Omaragomez in grade 4, Brayden Tinsley in grade 4, Abigail Harkins in grade 4, and Hannah Castano Muenten in grade 5. So our kids love that poster contest. They take a lot of time, put a lot of pride into that. I talked to you about the Walker Bike to School Day on the 8. Class of 2027 is having a flower sale from now through May 15. If you go to WHSclassof2027.fpfundraising.com, it's on their website, for more information to order that. Top 10, let's see what else. Oh, Winarc hosted an awesome and successful walk-run-or-roll fundraiser at D.R. Island on Sunday. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I had a previous commitment. However, I did get several pictures from my photographer, which happens to be my dad, who was there and took several pictures, and they really had a great time. Lots of friends coming in from out of town, people who support Winarc to attend this fundraiser. So that's, that's always a good take-in. And the middle school performed When Bad Things Happened to Good Actors this past weekend, and obviously it was another outstanding production. You know, the middle school program feeding into the high school program is just something special for our kids here in Winthrop. And that is all that I have.
Wonderful. Do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not. We do not.
And then we, I see that we have no appointments, resignations, or retirements at this point, but we do have postings.
Yes, one long-term sub for Phys Ed at the middle school from now till the end of the year, and a long-term special education substitute for maternity leave at the Gorman Fort Banks.
Okay. Any new business?
None.
Any other public relations?
I would just like to double down on urging people to attend the FinCom meeting either in person or by Zoom to understand the budget better, both the Needs-Based and the Level Services budget. This is a very important year for us as we move forward as a community to decide what we want for our schools and what kind of a education we want to be able to provide for our children. And that is a decision that needs to be made by the public. So people who are interested in care and So people who are interested and care and concerned, this is the time to jump in and become better educated about what we're trying to do and what we are doing now.
With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, motion, meeting is adjourned.